Welcome to the July meeting of the Republican Club. We're happy that you all are here and came out in the heat and having this nice, nice air conditioning this afternoon. So there is a copy of the agenda on the far table, so if you don't have one, but like one, please grab one and send them around, do those kind of things. It's pretty much the standard up there. With that said, I'd like to ask, do we have any new guests or members with us tonight? With that, Brent, do you want to introduce yourself?
Thank you. Good luck for us. We pray that you will give us honesty, help us to speak truthfully, teach us wisdom. We thank you, we ask to do this now.
All right, Brent, you want to turn us around and do the lead?
Please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We can go ahead and take our seats. The minutes to the meeting were sent electronically several weeks ago. So if you not had a chance to see those, I would ask you to kind of open up your email. It would be good if you could make sure your email is with this young lady to my left, so that we have good email addresses for you. I know some people had some concerns about making sure they were getting mail, but that's kind of how we're doing that. So if there are no additions or changes to the minutes, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes as published.
As published.
As published. In a second, please.
A second.
All right, three seconds. All those who are favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. With that, Allie, you want to give us a quick update on our finances?
Yes. Okay, we started the month with eleven thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars and seventeen cents. We gained ninety-four cents in bank interest. We have Mr. Shaper's new membership of twenty dollars. Our expenditures were two twenty-seven-ten. We ended the month with eleven thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and one cent. I'm going to start a new thing because transparency is a big, 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 big thing of mine. I want you as members to see where the money is going. So each month I will be making these agreements. These are checks. Any expenditures that we have, any additions that we have, will be on these. I will copy that and just like the agenda, I will put them out if you guys want to look at them. Take them home, put them in binder, on the financial report, check me out, because you're correct.
Questions for Allie? Again, we're in very good financial shape and continuing to be blessed with a lot of positive things from on the financial side of our house. So I think we're going into the fall, the election season next year, in extremely good shape, for candidates and other initiatives out there. Any other questions or comments for the Treasury Department? I want to ask a motion. As it did last month, we're going to continue this month out of respect for our guest speakers. Rashida Yost will be, is joining us as a gubernatorial candidate. Rashida is from the Panhandle in Martinsburg, and she has to get home this evening. So we are not going to bore her with all of the internal club business we have to talk about tonight and let her, let her give us, give us some updates on what she's working on in her campaign. So let's welcome Rashida to the floor.
Thank you.
Welcome to Greenbrier County.
Thank you. Go, West Virginia, go, Greenbrier. And I always start with something funny, you know, some jokes. We have this poor mother who's got two boys, a six-year-old and a seven-year-old, and you know, the little turkeys get a little bit, the little turkeys, you know, like get into trouble and always have reports. So mom, one day after church, went in and saw the pastor and said, "Father, my two boys, they're quite two handfuls, so is there anything you can do to help?" So the pastor said, "I'll talk to them one at a time." So the seven-year-old was in the office first, and of course, the pastor start with, "Son, have you seen God? Have you heard about Him?" And then the boy just looked, and then the pastor asked again, "Son, have you seen God? Do you know where He is?" You know? And the boy took off running, went into the other room where his little brother was. We have a situation. God is missing and they think we didn't.
I couldn't hear the punchline.
He told his brother that God is missing and they think they did it. That's why he was so scared. So, and what I'm trying to say is, the children nowadays, they have been very astray from faith because West Virginian people, they are working hard and just paying bills. We are actually raising ourselves like a parent. The government go out and find money. But you and I know as a parent, the first thing we do before we go out and work is to make sure our children are taken care of, like find a babysitter, find daycare, make sure that somebody's taking care of them so we can work and bring in the money. But the government is trying to bring in the money, but we're raising ourselves and our children are raised by technologies, by something that has no feelings, no values, nothing, no morals. And we need help. Now, I do not want to hear other people trying to run for office prioritizing anything else but us, just like our president, Trump. What does he do? America first, not road first, not energy first, not infrastructure first, Americans first. The same thing with me, West Virginians first, the children and the family. And for that, my platform's P-U-I-P. I designed it very easy. I know it's colorful, being a daycare teacher, I got liberty of having all these at the tip of my finger, like I need two colored paper, boom, like a genie, it appears. And ever heard of the terminologies? "I can't work so many hours, I will lose my benefit. I must stay and work the minimum so I can continue to have my benefits." We are investing for West Virginians to fail. We have to invest for West Virginians to succeed. A lot of them leaders are saying, "Bring in the people outside, come in here, help pull the economy." They are bending over backwards trying to get people to come in here. I am going to bend over backwards to stop people from leaving. How's that? That would make us want to stay, right? So no, no, we can do that. P-U-I-P. First, we have to protect West Virginia. I would like to put a police officer on duty in every public school because my governorship is to prevent. We're wasting money on cure. Oh, there's a big drug problem over there. Put more money to open more rehab center. Okay, how about put some money to do some prevention by paying for something for the kids at school so they're busy and not go do drugs? Let's do it the opposite way. Do more prevention. Prevention is a lot cheaper than cure. We eat healthy, we take care of our body, it don't cost so much, but when we don't, we have diabetic, we have heart failure, that is zero, 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 zero in medical bills. Cure is always expensive. Prevention is the best. Other than putting a police officer, all men and all women sports only. God created Adam and Eve. Other people created Leah Thomas and Dylan Mulvaney. God don't create them. Children are so free. They go home, they got their TikTok. I don't know, Michelle, a nine-year-old would ask, "I don't know if I'm a boy or a girl. Hey, TikTok, can you tell me if I'm a boy or a girl? Maybe I am a boy, maybe I am a girl, because they have nothing to do." And here we are, opening more rehab center, more schools, more clinics for mental illness. Everybody's talking about mental illness. Nobody's doing anything about it, namely one of our leader, existing and coming, who talk about any policies that will cure mental illness. I have the policies and I'm a nobody. And I'm the people because I know the problem. You and I know the problem. They sit up in their desk and just got reports. We are in the problem. They got reports. So that's the two things that's different than sending somebody who's from the problem, who knows the problem, to fix it. Plumbing company CEO, don't go to the plumbing places to fix the plumbing. The plumber go. Correct? So if we have a problem with our people, we send our people to fix it. And also, we have to put American flags in each and every classroom. There are too many wolves here that are empty in the classroom, so they can put red, green, yellow rainbow flags. Let's put the American flag, the only flag that is a recognized flag in this country, in our state. And also, in West Virginia, nobody's more pro-life than I am. I own daycare centers too, and I have teachers who have children attending the daycare centers for free, and they work there. In my thirty-four years in the education industry, I have myself, my own money, time, and service five hundred thousand dollars, thirty-four years helping communities local and overseas. I'm not counting what I've done. I'm here to spend every minute I have to tell you what I can do for us. You can Google me, you can look in my website, all my history, accomplishment, whatever the skeleton in there is, they said, "Are you not afraid to have your skeleton out there?" I say, "Girl, I hang them. They're not in the closet, they're outside drying." In a way, you know. Nothing to hide. If my opponent ever know anything about me, it's from me because I put it out there. No hide, nothing. I'm a human being just like you. So I am, nobody here is more pro-life than I am. I love children, I love families, but we got to help these teenagers. So a twelve-year-old, a thirteen-year-old, and a fourteen-year-old will come home pregnant because they need to have goals. They cannot raise kids, they need to raise their goals in their life and then they can raise their kids. So I'm here to help. We banned abortion, everybody is pro-life, but what are we going to do? Are we going to keep accepting the kids? Are we going to make sure that we're going to make sure the parents are ready to accept the kids? That's true love, painful love, that we're going to help these teenagers. Only a mother's, "Dad, I know you are the best. Without you, there's no us." But a mother's love and instinct is a little bit different. We, we have the instinct. My love for the children beyond, I will transform when it comes to children and families. And that's why I'm running. I'm running broke. I don't have any big donors, but I've got, and I have the children, and I know I can do it. There's always guests in the car, and that's what matters. So, pro-woman, pro-children, definitely pro-life. Next is upgrade West Virginia. How? Minimum public classroom size. I know some of my opponents say, "Why don't you drop out of the race? We'll give you a position, you can endorse other candidate because your platforms are very minor." We're minor. We're not minor, we're the major. There's no state if there's no people. The state needs the people and the people needs to be first. So minimum classroom size so our teachers don't walk out anytime. There is no amount of money that can keep a teacher, a police officer, firefighters and nurses enough. No amount of money is enough for them to stay happy in their job. But a lot of help is what they need, such as things that they can work with. Exterior renovation for small business owner like a one dollar to one dollar match. If a small business owner's got a leaking roof and they own a building, they renovate five thousand, the state can help twenty-five hundred. And that way, we don't close. A lot of businesses are closing. That is why they calling other states, other people to come here. Don't make sense. Stop the people from leaving, help the people here. Don't invite other people. We got to make the people in our home happy. And also, two, farmers protection plan. I have planned for farmers, a lot of this agricultural, it's seasonal. And then what? That's why we're buying stuff from outsources. But West Virginia is very rich. We have a lot of wealth that we're suppressed not to use, like our coal miners also. So although I'm running for children and families, I'm not oblivious to the big problem that we have too. So I am everything. And then we have invest, the next. Paid daycares for all essential staff. I'm not benefiting from it because, you know, my daycare is just small. I'm talking about statewide. If you don't have daycare for your families, you can't work. So essential workers especially, PEA is increasing, and we need to help them. Teachers got so many things to, so many obligations to pay. Their money is just going to bills. If we help pay their daycares, that six, seven hundred dollars that they save could have them a better deal for cars, for insurance, the money's coming back. You and I know, we know that. It's not like, "Where you going to get the money, Rashida?" They throwing money for prevent, for cures. We're going to invest money for prevention. And when you prevent something, you have a higher chance of success than if you throw money on cure. No money in this world is enough to save everybody's problem, but if we have some money to stop the source of the problem, we will have it good. And also, what do I mean by buy here, pay here, home mortgage? Our seniors, when they retire, they have money, they put it in Edward Jones, they put it in other investors, it goes to Florida, it goes to California, it goes to New York. After four, five people get their cut, then we get like a teeny weeny check and we thought it's a wow. How about if we invest in our own state? For example, like the county, we have ten people who retire. I'm going to use a simple number. Each of the ten people has two hundred thousand dollars that they would have invested in other investment, invested on the county. The county will buy land, will build homes for Connor, who is twenty-five, a contractor, Cindy, his girlfriend or his wife, a nurse can pay for mortgage instead of the bank loan. Not everybody is qualified for a bank loan. If we do buy here, pay here in the house, you have your home that you pay, you have your children that got paid for daycares, and you have that extra money to buy insurance to make a better quality of yourself. If that is not almost heaven again, I don't know what is. If you are Connor and you're Cindy, would you leave West Virginia? You have a home that you pay mortgage, your children in the daycare paid for by the state, your wife is a nurse, go to work every day, and you have contracting that you have to do because people have that extra money to always do stuff. Wouldn't that be better? That is to keep people from living, wouldn't it? And our seniors, their investment is right there. I get that check directly come over here between the county and my bank account. If they don't pay, they lose the house, right? Like the car. You don't pay for your car, you don't have a car. But as long as you paying for the car, at the end of the day, until you finish paying, the car is yours, the house is yours. You have property. Never dream of somebody who is broke, who's working as labor, actually owning a home. And that is a good choice. Now, about the goals and aspiration, Brent. Again, Michelle is nine years old. She loves ballet. Mom can pay because mom is a single mom. She has two other kids. She lives in a small vehicle trailer. Mom got three jobs, a day, not a week. So Michelle come home with her cellphone, go to TikTok, questions for gender identity. But if Michelle's can get the ballet class in the school, paid for by the state, Michelle has recitals, Michelle has performance, she will not question her gender identity, she will not go to drugs, she will not be a teen pregnancy, she will not bully other people because she has that ballet to look forward to. Small business owner, imagine you own a ballet business. Instead of having to rent a big hall like this, you just need a small office, you can employ five ballet teachers and deploy them in the schools. Your overhead is small, but you have income coming. You pay tax, the teachers, the ballet, the ballet teachers go to schools and they teach. Our teachers in school have that extra hours to wind down. It's a win-win situation. And if we do not, if we do not get on this platform, how are we going to promote West Virginia? Right? Oh, they have school curriculum paid for. Connor can go join karate instead of hitting people out there, but then he won't do it because there's a police officer out there. We can actually cut down police, cut down drug transactions in class because there's an officer out there. We can actually stop anybody who's got an intention to come in for school shooting because there's an officer out there. See all that things that people are going to be safe again? Kids are performing, teachers are less stressed. As a joke, okay, Connor, you're not going to listen, I'll call Officer Prue here. Just kidding, we shouldn't do that, but you know, like the kids, we would like to take a picture with Officer Prue. So family package, school, daycares, jobs, homeowners, save. Eighteen months is all I need after I'm in office. And you will hear people say, "I am proud to be a West Virginian." My governorship will have this eighteen months after I take office. I don't remember the last time I slept because I have a daycare. I will pick that phone call at three. And I put you first. I don't have anybody that I actually negotiate with, like I said, I already sold myself to you. Other candidates tell me, I say, "Sorry, you're too late." I already sold my dedication to the people of West Virginia. Now, who in their right mind would do that? Takes a crazy person to change the world, and I'm proud to call myself crazy. You're welcome. One last thing. I am Rashida Yost. I'm running for West Virginia governor. I'm a proud wife of a B.S.M. Berkeley Springman. Got you? Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned having a place for the bigger school. What do you think about having the teachers on?
The teachers on, this officer out there, that's a start. Now, we can get some of the teachers to carry maybe high school and also middle school, but elementary, I think a police officer would be great. And again, if we have the benefits taken care of, there will be more people that would want to take that job. And in fact, we have the money, it's just the money spent stupidly.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to use the word, the government spend money stupidly. They don't spend it to the people, they spend it to more on organizations than that money from the people. Drugs, methanol is increasing. Our Attorney General, "What are you doing? You're very proud of the billion dollars that you want? Is the money going to go to the person or families who lost their children? Will that bring the children back?" So you should know that drugs should not be like that. We should not be proud of what we have. We should be ashamed of things that should have been done but was never done. And that's why every day I tell myself, "I'm not proud of what I've done, I'm ashamed of things that I could have done, but I've never done it, and I'm going to do it." This book right here is every county that me and Tina, my campaign manager, go, and we bought a trade. I don't pay her money, she get her grandkids to my daycare. And she helped me. We bought a trade. So, and it's a wonderful thing. You see how creations can be done? And this book here will be on top of the Bible that I will be swearing on because it's got the story of West Virginia in all the counties that I've gone and will be here in all the counties that I'm going, and I will swear upon it. That's what I will do, keep my word, and I will go there. Yes, ma'am.
Can I say, you need to promote your YouTube videos on?
I know, did you see it? I was like a grandma, you know, screaming. I know. I know. I mean, I'm not that dramatic, but I know I need to get audience, so I put in a little bit of acting, you know, I'm very sober, I've never drank in my whole entire life, never do anything, no drug, I don't even smoke, ever. You can tell the friends I have in high school and college, so which is very little. Yes.
As a viewer, I just found it very informative and it kind of gives a little personality behind you.
Yes.
Kind of gets to know you, so you probably should promote that when you're on stage.
Listen, this is not me, it takes a lot to, I am the tights and T-shirts person. I always wear the Yost for Governor shirts, and we got a lot of backlash, like, "You want to be the governor, you got to work on your outlook." You don't understand, I'm representing the people. If I want to wear pearl earrings, I'm representing out there. I'm not representing them, I'm representing the people of West Virginia. So yes, but this is as close as far as I would go, but I won't be like Fetterman, you know, like coming in hoodies and everything, no. So, but other than that, I work. I'm a worker and as a governor, it's a service, it's not a job. I'm not fighting for my job, I'm fighting for yours. And I would love to have this opportunity. We were just sharing, talking about I'm facing all these with the big voice, right? What was I thinking? I said, "That's okay, here are the voice, we're the guys." And I understand, being a woman is a little hard, but it's got to be done. We have got the same kind of government every term, same. Name me one West Virginian who's happy with the government today. We can't say that. We can't, but we will. If we send money to them, we cut the cycle, and I'm ready, I'm more than ready because I'm not afraid to win. Not to lose, but to win. Takes a lot of guts to win because you got to go through, and I'm not afraid to win. So I'm ready, and I think President Trump and I are going to have to fight for airtime, you know. I don't know who's, you know, who's more mouthy, me or him, but I'm, I'm going to take us there. I'm going to take us there.
What do you think about legalizing drugs like marijuana?
I think we should keep it the way it is, not legalizing anything, just like our teenagers. When your daughter turns sixteen, "Hey, I'll be coming back after midnight," nope, it's still ten forty-five. We know as long as she comes home before twelve, she's okay. But she doesn't know that, right? Just like the drugs, if we make it okay, boom, it's getting out of control. But we should have guidelines. Therefore, it will not get out of control, and there are people who are just a second going to abuse it. And these are people who would come from other states and influence us, our children, and also turning them into somebody we don't know. We've got people from other states just driving in, "Hey, you free? Mommy's working, can you help me do something?" Blah, 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 and that's how kids fall for it. But if kids busy in school and they're doing karate, they're doing violin, they're doing ballet, they're doing other activity, gymnastic, they don't have time. They don't have time. And with the police on guard, just walk about, police are going to cut down drug transaction in Martinsburg. I'm set to say, "I was there about two months ago, giving a talk to about two hundred high school seniors, and we're looking like in a classroom where packets were thrown across and got from some other kids." And then walk to the bathroom. Where have our government been? Where's the Attorney General? Where is the police officer? Where? We've got to do something. Keep the children busy, focus their attention on their goals, not to get it occupied by something else, like an empty home. What would be in here? Cobwebs, and it would deteriorate. But if it's occupied, taken care of, the space is beautiful. That's children's minds, that's everybody's minds, so we got to keep them occupied. It's a small investment on the state, small investment. We have the money for investing to succeed, not cure. So no, I would say no, I would keep it as it is, make it strict a little bit. Of course, you know, the farmer, they want to put this medication, that medication. Sorry to take the time, but this is real thing that happened in the children's world. I'm in the children's world. Mom and dad went through a divorce, got two kids, maybe like about three years old and maybe seven years old. Seven years old's badly affected, start throwing a fit. These are tensions like us adults. When we're stressed, we can drink, we can smoke, we can do drugs, all that. Kids can't do that, what they do? They color the wall, they color the floor, they tear stuff in the- They color the wall, they color the floor, they tear stuff in the house. Took these kids to the doctor, doctors, okay, he's out of control. Give medications, zombified the kids. And the kids got uh hooked to drugs, grow up fourteen, fifteen year olds, got to be drug dependent. Enough. Stop this stupidity. We need to help our people because this is going to go nowhere. Nobody care, nobody talk about it. I'm talking about, you know, and I know that this thing's happened. But I'm bold enough, daring enough to do something and I will. On my first week as your governor, I don't care anything else. If it doesn't have the children and families in that paperwork, I don't want it. For the first time, in that first week, everything should be about children and families and then everything else can come later. I'm sorry, but I'm not, you know, I'm not going to tell you what you want to hear. I'm going to tell you what I feel that I could do and therefore I'm being honest, children and families. And then, after we've taken care of our families, let's get to work. Let's talk about the coal miners, let's talk about energy, let's talk about water, let's talk about infrastructures. Let's work on our well that we have, put it to good use for our people.
Any questions for Rashida before she steps up?
I have three daughters and an eleven year old son.
I know everybody's got her uh handout, so if there are questions, there's an email address on there, website's on there, so feel free to.
Yes, I, you know, shoot me any question, emails, phone calls, you know? I would do that because I'm very dedicated. A lot, she even asked me, did you even sit and rest? I can sit and rest when I die, now it's okay. Mommy gotta go to work.
Uh what is your website?
Uh Y O S D, Yost number four, governor dot O R G dot org. Yost for governor dot org. That's my website, Yost for Governor twenty twenty-four for the Facebook page and twenty twenty-eight. Yeah, might as well throw another, another term in there, now get things done. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, we've got a number of lines to talk about uh this evening, so Rashida, you more than welcome to stay or I know you have to head back soon, but if you want to make your way, you're more than welcome to do that, whatever, whatever suits you.
If you have a question, please call and please email. I, number one, I don't want to intrude, you know, I know you guys got meetings. And also, number two, I don't care how many hours I have to drive. In fact, Dr. McKinney was very gracious enough to offer his hospitality. And we wish we want to stay, but number one, I snore so loud, so I'm very. You know, I will win the whole people, but you know, I'm as honest as I can be. Like I said, you know, I'm not putting on a show, I'm not putting on something that you want to see. I'm putting on something that you will see because this is your future governor, humble and loving and also dedicated. So I'll just drive back home, but please keep in touch. We will be back for the fair and also for any events, we're just a drive away. Yep.
We're in Portion, fair.
Thank you, everybody, thank you so much, have a great meetings. I know I love meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
So, I thought it was very informative, and I, again, just for the new folks here that have been with us too long. I, I would say that's what the club's all about, and that's education and bringing people in and uh you know, Rashida runs the governor out of Martinsburg and we're bringing in gubernatorial candidates every month, we have some Attorney General candidates coming in. So you get, you're going to get to see and talk to and ask questions of people that will be on the ballot next May. And it should be exciting to uh have that opportunity. So I would ask you to, you know, if you like for that kind of thing, ask people to come out, we have a full slate for the rest of the year of speakers that will be joining us. And so you get to hear, you know, a lot of different opinions and uh and advice on how they are running their campaigns, so. With that, we do have some internal stuff to talk about. And I thought it'd be uh good to kick off with our parade on Tuesday. We uh did have a, a pretty nice time out there in Alderson and uh Ellie, I don't know, you kind of drove that thing, anything you want to give us something on?
It's been fun, it's been a lot of fun. So, we're not seeing everybody hearing the, the cheers as we're going down the road because of our let's go friends and um Vanna, um it's, Rashida's been a big help. Been fun, a lot of fun.
Yep, and uh summer's not over, so there are other opportunities to participate as we go through the rest of the year. I think with every community in the four county areas having some kind of parade or event uh this time of year. But the Alderson one is the big guy, uh this is the booklet, I'll share this here in a minute. Our ad is in the, you know, the first third of it, it was pretty good. If you're interested in what your friends in the uh Blue Skies are doing, they're running the same ad they run every single year. Our is a little different, but I'll start that over there with Mr. Nutter and you guys can take a look at that. But it was a great event, I thought, Ellie did a very nice job getting this set up for us and it was a lot of fun. Uh the next thing I want to talk about is for a moment, an old business, we talked about this last month and probably the month before, just, you know, we are looking at our, our membership program in totality. Uh we are going to do some uh kind of a drive, we think, towards the end of the year uh to bring in some new members and get some uh, get some new uh, new excitement into the organization. Uh with that, we're going to try to do that with a picnic. Uh we look at the calendar, um we kind of are flooding up against the state fair over the next couple of weeks. And so what, what we didn't want to do is, it's going to be a lot of effort to get the fair pulled off frankly, and we're going to need all your, your help and Brent will talk about that in a few minutes. Uh but we're thinking after the fair, when it comes down, just a little bit, probably in the September timeframe, we'll, we'll put something together and get that out to everybody. So we'll uh get that update out to you on the, the picnic this summer and what the membership program is going to look like as soon as we get, get some more details with that. So we are working on that in the background. So with that, uh I thought we'd talk about some new business. We do have some uh exciting new business uh to, to communicate to the club tonight. Uh the first one is our bylaws. Uh we uh sent the bylaws about a week ago electronically, so you should have had the opportunity to kind of scroll through them. Uh I can tell you the bylaws committee worked tirelessly over the last number of months trying to pull this together. Uh I think everybody put boogies here from the committee. Uh and so uh this is a plan for us to review the bylaws with you all, uh discuss the changes we have, hear your feedback if there's any. And then ultimately, if everyone's comfortable, we'll, we'll move forward with the vote. So with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. McKinney, who was our chairman of our bylaws committee to review this with you.
Well, the, the bylaws committee consisted of me, Janie Kirk, Roseanne Shoup and Boogie Amble. And uh everybody had some uh rigid ideas of principles that uh we should adhere to. And we got them ready uh very promptly and for various reasons, we never did get them presented. And then the executive committee passed a new set of bylaws and pretty much totally divorced themselves from the Republican Club. So that called us, uh we had to uh redo our bylaws and that's why some of the things in there that we have not tied ourselves to not supporting candidates in the primary. And we are, have uh dedicated the club towards educating the public and Republican principles and providing volunteer support for events and uh supporting candidates uh by having them appear and supporting their appearances locally so that people can get to know those candidates. And other than that, our bylaws are pretty much the same, except that we've delineated what voting members are. And we've made very clear how the elections are held and who can, who is eligible to vote in those. And uh one of the important things is, we have not set a uh membership fee and that will be determined in, in the fall of each year by the executive committee. If uh everybody is flush, it may go up a little bit. If we're on hard times in West Virginia, it may be appropriate to, to decrease them a bit. But uh that's one of the significant things in there. And uh I think you'll find that everything about ours is made to give you clarity and uh transparency with everything the club does. And one of the differences in the club is, we are not uh running you and telling you what to do. If you're a member of the club, you're telling the club what you want to see and what you want to do. We think that's an important part of these bylaws. And uh if, if they'd like to, I'd be glad to have Janie and Roseanne over here say something about the bylaws.
I think you've covered things pretty well, assuming that everyone has had a chance to look at them.
And I'm here and I would certainly second that. I think, you know, we, we have highlighted the fact that we are going to be independent from the county executive committee and that our emphasis is going to be on volunteer efforts and education through presentation of uh candidates and various speakers so that we can all hopefully make informed decisions come election time.
Does anybody have any questions on any portion of the bylaws or on the concept of the bylaws?
Doug, do we have uh in the draft of the bylaws, is, is there a statement that the club does not take a position upon um candidates in the primary election?
That, that has been one of the things in the uh, in the bylaws in the past. And that's been one of the things of the executive committee. And it has been uh in some, some cases ignored. The uh club itself has uh made it a policy never to favor one candidate over another in, in the primary elections.
But the uh executive committee, the official structure, uh do their bylaws state that they will nominate someone or take a position to favor?
Uh I think they've been published, if you read it, is that they are going to ask each candidate, as soon as you file for office, they're going to give you a questionnaire to fill out. And then the executive committee will review that questionnaire and from that, they're going to decide whom they're going to support.
Before the primaries?
So essentially, they are choosing your candidates, period.
And we know how that's going to go.
Which we have never felt comfortable with doing, it's, it's like with Rashida Yost. Some people say, you know, we shouldn't even invite her here because she's not going to be able to raise the money to uh have a viable campaign. But I think it's important to encourage everybody that wants to run for uh office. And I think you saw tonight that uh you may get some unexpected good ideas and some uh good insights into things uh that, that other candidates are missing, so. Uh we, we have not taken a position on that, we've never asked candidates to uh file reports. We've uh encouraged them to come to our meetings and state their cases and to uh, to meet the members of the club. And uh that your support should come from individuals rather than the, the club itself. That's not saying that uh at the, in the general election, we will probably be supporting uh our Republican candidates. But we're not obligated to it as they are in the executive committee. So with all that said, uh if, if there are no further questions, uh I would ask for a, a motion to uh approve our bylaws.
Just make the motion, you make it.
Do what?
Make the motion.
Well, with that, I, I move that uh the uh club adopt the bylaws for the Greenbarr County Republican Club as were uh distributed electronically. And we do have copies if you want to have them, or we can tell you where to get them on, on the internet. So that's my motion.
I would need a second to uh to bring this. Janie, any second or is that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, motion passed. So I thank you for your support of this, I would also like to thank the uh bylaws committee who worked, again, a lot of time into this document uh to get it to the point where we could present it to you this evening. Um our path forward is, I think Janie's got the final copy of it, so what we'll do is kind of, Roberts requires that we highlight the changes for you, so you can see what was changed, what was added, so you can have it available for you. We'll kind of turn that into a black and white copy, I'll sign off on it and we'll get it posted to the website and get some copies out to you all and work through that administrative process. But thank you all for your support and again, thank you to the committee who did a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting to get us to this point. That's a nice place to be. With that, um I thought it would be good to have Thomas Perkins talk for a few minutes about our new website. If you haven't been out on our new website out there, it is out, it is live, we've uh been working on that over the last couple of weeks in the background, so. Thomas, you want to give a quick uh, quick update on what that thing looks like and where you can find us and what our path forward is?
All right, so I've been working on the club website for a few weeks now, I was trying to get it up and running before the fourth of July. And I also tried to do some seals and some graphics, uh my printer kind of ran out of ink. But we, it's actually, looks pink, but it's actually red. And I'm thinking we should do maybe a motion to approve this as a club seal. So that way it's kind of used more universally, I don't know if anyone wants to do that or not. I can pass these around here in a minute. But in addition to that, um also I'm working on redoing the club's membership registration cards, which, you know, Doug requested that. And we're also doing basically some, a detail, which is like I'm a proud supporter of the Greenbarr County Republicans Club. So we're thinking about doing maybe window details or bumper stickers, but we do need club approval with that. But as far as the website goes, um me and Gordon kind of agreed to do a relatively basic website uh because when you start building a more complex, more complex website, it costs money security wise. So we kept it simple. Um and we'll see how the club's website does over time. If it, if a lot of people are using the website for donations and stuff like that, then we'll review that and consider investing more money to, you know, improve the website overall. Um so that's kind of the plan as far as the website goes. We did set up um social media accounts and stuff um across the board. Um so right now there is a facebook.com forward slash Greenbarr County Republicans Club. And then we have, um I think we set up different social media accounts, which we're not going to use, which is like Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, just all the different ones. But those are just kind of something that we're holding on to right now, just so we have them. But we're also using, um but the official website domain is greenbarrcountyrepublicansclub dot com. And we also have um the abbreviations for that, which is a um G C R C P A C dot com, which stands for Greenbarr County Republican Club Political Action Committee. So if you type that in, it will redirect you to the main website, so that's just a little bit shorter to type in than the full version of it and stuff. But in addition to that, most all the social media accounts is using the um G C R C P A C. Um so that way it's kind of universal across the board, any questions?
There's also added a uh biography page for the officers with short bios of all the officers so that if you look at the uh club, you can see who uh the leaders are of your club, which may influence you one way or the other on whether you want to be a member of the club. Thomas has, has done a great job on that and he, he is modestly refrained from telling you about the Greenbarr Journal, which is his online newspaper.
Well, at the bottom of the web, club's um website and stuff, it is being maintained by me, Seneca Trail Media, so there is a thing at the very bottom and stuff, which does connect to me because I am maintaining the site. But I mean, that's just part of, you know, part of like, I guess, liability and stuff, so people want to know who's managing the website, it's, you know, Seneca Trail Media LLC, which is my business, so.
What is the website address?
GreenbarrCountyRepublicanClub dot com.
And Thomas, you're also covering every event that we do, every parade I've seen you at, I've seen the pictures on that, you did an amazing job, thank you.
Thank you, that's wonderful.
Thomas, several times when you were speaking, you said Republicans Club. Did you actually mean that or what's, what's the difference?
It's republican. Yeah, it's republican, I've always said it with the S, but it's, it's republican club, so, yes.
We appreciate you doing that, she's wonderful.
So, uh I know we went through that kind of quickly, uh but tonight was our launch, we've been out kind of tinkering with it for the last couple of weeks. You know, we're trying to get the thing uh up and running and mature. So what we're looking for is feedback, so if you haven't been out there and looked at it, please take some time to do that. What we're going to do is start to uh bring that up in terms of advertising, so you get to see the link and you get to see all that. We haven't done that up until tonight, we want to talk to you about it first. Uh again, if you guys are supportive of moving ahead, then we'll go ahead and incorporate that into our, you know, our email address and our communication to you all. With that, I would also say we will begin to migrate a lot more of our communication to the website so that people can see what we're doing, what we're working on, and we're going to add some, some depth and dimension to that uh where it can be available for people to use. So I think it's going to be a, a So I think it's gonna be a living thing for a while, and then what Thomas has done, and we hope to do in the future, is gonna be a great tool for us and a great vehicle to get people more involved in the club. We're gonna have people do, you know, online registration for club membership. We're gonna be able to sell tickets online to activities and events and those kind of things that we've done a little bit in our past, and we're gonna be able to mature it now with this, and I think that's gonna be great. So one of the things that I would tell you when I was president was we, you know, all these candidates, Rashida Yost, for example, I'll use her. If she wants to come to our Christmas dinner, she's gotta figure out how to get tickets. So that's a problem, if she's in Martinsburg or down here. So in the future, what we'll have is a website where she can go to the website and just order her tickets online, and they'll email to her, and the post will be ready, I mean, the word on the way. And we've seen that with a lot of candidates around the state, who want to participate in our events, but have the challenge of, you know, you need to get a paper ticket in your hand somehow. So it costs us money, it costs them time and trouble to do that. We're gonna fix all that with this going forward. So it's gonna be a great vehicle for our future and website about what Thomas is bringing to it. So you had a logo you wanted to share with us one more time?
Yes, I was wanting to pass these around. There's three sheets here, but one is actually a detail, which we're thinking about doing, which is basically, I'm a proud supporter of the Greenbarr County Republicans Club. And what we're thinking about doing, and it's something the club would have to approve first, is like, whenever somebody joins the Republican Club as an individual, we would give away like one free winded detail. And if you join as a family unit, you would get three to wind the details. And that's something that you could either, you know, put on your vehicle, you could put it.
I've actually started on this, so.
Yes, I know. But it's just something that the club kind of has to approve first. And then in addition, we're doing kind of a club seal, which is kind of on the website. Now, the reason I decided to do this is one of the talks earlier this year was, the club logo itself was just the Republican Party logo, and it had pentagrams on it. The club voted to correct the stars on that so that it's actual stars that represent the party. Well, the problem is, if you look at some of our recent ads, we're still using pentagrams because we have old graphics, right? So a simple way to do it is to create something new, and then we can kind of phase out those older graphics as we move forward. So that's one way to kind of fix that issue.
With that, I'm gonna segue to yet another activity we're doing. And we are blessed by having Mr. Brent Thompson, who has stepped to the plate this year and will be hosting us all for the fair. He would like to talk to you all about what a great opportunity we have for ten days at the fair next month. With that, I'll turn it over to Brent.
Doug caught me in a weak moment and asked if I would service the chair for the Republican booth for this coming state fair. I said yes. So we are going to be setting up the site in the West Virginia building, and it will be, I think, a ten by ten table or enclosure as our booth. We will have ten days of staffing that for the state fair. So far, we have eleven people who have agreed to staff it for certain hours, and we will put out the calendar for you. If you can sign up to work that booth, they are five-hour shifts from nine to two and two to seven. Now, the club does go until nine o'clock, or the fair goes until nine o'clock. But at seven o'clock, the concerts begin. So nobody's going to be running through the building and coming to the club. But I will undertake to sit there during those two hours and safeguard the money. As you know, I am a lawyer and very attracted to money. I make sure that that is safe. Don't worry a bit. Trust me now. Well, yeah, trust me. And each person, Doug, will receive a ticket to enter the fair to work at the booth.
Yep, let's go up.
What are the duties while you're there for one night? Just sitting there, or, I mean?
Helping to people by politics.
We will have, I think, as in the last time, we will have a cardboard cutout of the donster and a cardboard cutout of the current incumbent. Who's, I have proposed some things to be hung around the current incumbent so that we can get a flavor for what he believes in and how he's doing. I don't know if we'll actually use all of these, but I've been a liar for fifty years. I hate coal, oil, and gas. I'm the divider-in-chief. I've invited everyone from other countries to come to the United States to be good Democrats. It's okay with me for Iran to get nuclear bombs. It's okay for China to take Taiwan, as our Secretary of State just said, I think, last week, that we don't care about that.
Really?
The withdrawal from Afghanistan was a great success. And what am I doing here?
Inflation's a great success too. Oh, yeah, I forgot that. You get to our high.
Inflation is transitory. We know that.
We have invited all the statewide candidates and the candidates for the first congressional district to display campaign literature at the booth. And we hope to have a well-done history of the Republican Party, which we'll be able to distribute there as well. And we will also have a collection box, of which we hope to collect enough money to buy Hunter and Joe Biden one-way tickets to China.
Are you sure we can't get them to Gitmo?
I can get them to Gitmo.
Get them to Gitmo.
We, last year, used packs of Trump bucks. I think this year, we would order thirty-five hundred of those. And we cannot sell anything at the state fair, but we can take donations. We received eight hundred dollars' worth of donations last year. And with the cutouts and the outfit booth, furnished the booth for approximately four hundred dollars.
I'd say if we get a motion for four fifty, that'd give us a nice little coverage there.
Hold on, now what?
Four fifty.
Might say on that donation, if the people are interested in those, just voluntarily tell them we can't sell you one, but we accept the donation. And if that, except the donation.
You would get a body.
Kids, parents get the word, and they break out their wallet, and they put money in.
Do we know the cost of these dollars?
We do. I don't know if I'm discovering or not.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'd be happy to. Yes, with the bulk rate, if we buy the three thousand that we think, and it's, they're twelve cents a piece. But, you know, that's a lot of money for respect. But at the end of the day, if I give you a Trump buck and I get a dollar back, I've made eighty cents on that. You know, eighty cents on that, so that's a good return. So one of the challenges we had last year was, you know, people didn't quite understand the math, and they were handing out big stacks of them to kids and stuff like that. So we bled through a lot of them fairly quickly. But in the end, all it does so, we did net eight hundred dollars to the good for it. So we paid for all these things, and then we got eight hundred dollars on top of it. So it was a good story. So I'll come back next month, or Brent will come back next month, and we'll kind of coach everybody again, don't just give them away in big stacks. But, I mean, it's not a, Frank is absolutely right. We cannot, you cannot sell in the West Virginia building. But you can ask for donations, and certainly give them something for their trouble.
Certainly give them a souvenir.
And then you get a little kid once, when, that's.
Each of the bucks.
In and out, you know, stacks of five or ten of economics.
Thirty-five hundred of them is how much?
Three thousand.
Three hundred and sixty dollars.
Three hundred and fifty-five dollars and eight cents for three thousand, that's kind of a racket. We ordered thirty-five hundred last year, and we ended up with a lot of them sort of left over. They went to the headquarters. I think three thousand will get us to the fair this year. And if people are a little more judicious about not throwing them out by the stack, we'll probably be all right.
I have into, or it came, about a thousand flag lapel pins that I was gonna see if you all wanted to use with the booth also. I have flag stickers that you can give away to the children instead of Trump bucks.
That would be fine.
And I think it might make it.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. You know, this is all we had last year, but they were incredibly successful. It worked fairly last year, people were, thought these were.
We need to make any authorization on expenditures for the fair.
We do, I need someone to make a motion that we.
Four fifty.
That we allocate four hundred and thirty dollars to expenses with this.
So move, a move that we allocate four hundred and fifty dollars for the cost of outfitting the Republican booth at the fair. And that would include the cutouts.
And I'd like a second on the floor. Roseanne, one second. Okay, all those who favor, please say aye. I will spend your money. Oh, my gosh. Okay. So Brent, one thing I want to make sure we add clarity on, how do they sign up? How do people sign up? We're desperate now, they've got this good sales pitch to be part of the fair experience.
I have a calendar.
Stickers.
Of everyone, of all of the days of the fair are from nine to two and two to seven.
But now we just approved that?
And we need some names to go in that. Those who have already volunteered, their names are already on here. So thank you very much for doing that. And we'll need, before you leave tonight, anyone who wants to work at the booth, we'd love to have you.
Okay, so I'm not being silly here, but is there any guidelines about who can actually work the booth and who cannot?
Anyone who's an adult?
No, we really don't have a member on that. I mean, honestly, we struggle to get all the shows covered, so we're not, you know, we don't interpret the way, so.
And they get an admission ticket, so it doesn't cost them anything to get in.
All right, so the tablet will be on the table here, as you all, you know, have time to look at and think about the day. We've been talking about the fair for the last couple of months, so that you all can think about, you know, when you might have an afternoon or an evening free, you can support the fair. We encourage you all to be participative in that. It is fun, I mean, you do talk to a lot of people, but, you know, it's tedious if multiple people have to come back, you know, day after day because we couldn't fill the seats, so would ask you to do that.
If you're worried about what to do and what you shouldn't do, we will have printed instructions. And we'll have, we'll issue them to everybody that's gonna work there. We'll also have our notebook there that has the written instructions in them and a schedule of people who are to relieve you, and we'll have the phone numbers in them, so.
And I'll go over those instructions with you before we open the booth.
And we'll dedicate some time next month. All right, Brent will have the notepad out, take a look at that before you leave, and we will. Thank you, Brent, we appreciate your support, and we'll look forward to doing the fair next month. Moving right along, so let's talk about items for the good of the club. Anybody have any input, ideas, suggestions, things that we can talk about?
Don't move.
All right, we have a motion to approve the logo.
I'll second.
You have seconds. All those who favor the logo, please say aye. Logo is approved. All right, let's move on to items for the good of the club as we close out the meeting. Any other items for discussion tonight?
We have an announcement for the good of the club.
Very good.
The summer scouting finally had the drawing with their semi-automatic road gate. I guess it was.
Did you well? You're good.
Put your telephone.
Good for you, congratulations. Shotgun. Yeah, Dr. Jones has been hopping tickets for. All right, let's get back in the meeting, folks, and we'll finish this up, and let you all get out of here and start your evening. So the only item I want to share with you, and this is an important, is club expenses. A lot of people are buying a lot of things, donating a lot of things, contributing a lot of things to the benefit of the club, which is fantastic. However, Ally has got to report all our income streams, whether they're financial or other, as part of our obligation that's been had. So I would ask everybody, if you're out, you know, buying stuff for clothes or buying stuff for this, that, and the other thing, bring the receipts for Ally, or if you're gonna make an in-kind donation, that's fine too. But we just need to identify that as an in-kind donation. So I feel like we need to talk about that a little bit, because a lot of stuff is coming and going here the last couple of weeks, with the parade and the fair coming up and those kind of things. But that's great that we have that participation, and we appreciate it. All we need to do is have to pay for it and support all that, and make sure Ally gets one. With that, a couple of days to remember, we'll be back here August third. And we will be talking to Mike Stewart, who's a senator, a state senator for us. He's an attorney general candidate. Mike came to our dinner a couple of months ago, was a very interesting fellow to get to meet and know him, so we're looking forward to having Mike here in August. Again, the other thing we're gonna do in August, we'll get that in the end of the year on the fair, have all those details for you. The dates of the fair are on your handout. We're back here in September with Matt Warner, and here in October with Chris Miller.
We have one more issue just for the last day, is Ryan Wells, who is a senator from Wellsburg, up there with him, is also running for attorney general. He's gonna be here in November.
So we've got the rest of the calendar year full. We don't meet in December, with the dinner coming up that weekend. So, you know, we've got this year full, and we'll take a little bit of a pause and come back again with the next four or five months of people as we go into the primaries. This calendar is full, if you want to come see us, spend time with us. So I encourage you all to, as I always say, spread the gospel about the club and get people out to hear, you know, Matt Warner, the Mike Stewarts, Rashida Yost to the world, that kind of thing. From a volunteer perspective, with the approval of the bylaws, one of the things that's new in the bylaws is the membership chair roles. We are looking for that, now that that's formalized, so if you're interested in that opportunity, come talk to me about it. Do that. And again, I will reiterate that, as dinner is not too terribly far away in September. And those who would like to participate in, and be part of that, we'd love to have you participate with us in that. Any other items for the good of the club? I know it's good to be that time, yes, sir.
Back to the website real quick. I never mentioned the cost on everything, twenty-one dollars. Then we had to purchase the domains, which that's an annual recurring fee. They're about fifteen dollars per year, and there was two that was purchased. Obviously, it was forty-six eighty, was expenditures. Now, the club website has to be paid for annually. You have to have web hosting, which is about, I figure about ten dollars a month. That's another expenditure, which is a hundred and twenty per year, is what I figure.
Let's break that down into twelve months, and it's not the cost, is that possible?
Yeah, it's ten dollars a month, which is not a lot at all. So, but as far as, we never actually had, I don't think, a formal vote on approval for the club website or the cost of that. So can we get maybe a motion on that?
I move we approve two hundred and fifty dollars in the way for website expenses.
Okay, do you have a second? Second, all those who favor, please say aye. All right, Thomas, you're funded.
All right, thank you.
Very good. With that, I would just like to, I know we're a little bit late, but I hope everybody enjoyed the Fourth of July and enjoyed their time at home or at Alderson, or whatever you did with fireworks. I remember that's what the independence of this nation is all about, and hopefully you'll have time to remember that during this holiday week. So with that, I would ask our good friend, Mr. Curtley, to sing "God Bless America." Sing "God Bless America."
God bless America, and bless thy love, and design her, and guide her through the night with the light from above, from the mountains to the valleys, to the oceans, white with song. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.